Okay folks, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the Village of Newglarus Board meeting to order and say we pledge allegiance... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three, please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. Item four, look from the pool of the agenda.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item five, all adherents of the citizens' comments, no debate, will occur on the board on items in the group by citizens, item will not be acted upon at this meeting but will refer to the proper staff and committee of action as required, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
That's up to you, we can wait until the item comes up though.
I presume most everybody's here for the library issue, is there anybody here that wants to speak on an issue other than the library?
I was here to talk about the special event from Mexico.
Okay, when that comes up then we'll let you speak.
I'm here to answer any questions if there are any for the circuits or in that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay Mike, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item six, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Item seven, approval of certified survey map for lot forty-two to report a land split.
Mike, do you want to take me through a summary of it?
Sure, I can do that. Originally, the certified survey map was approved as a two-lot survey map. Got the original layout here, that was approved back in November of last year. And since that time, the project is, it's a HUD project. And since that has been submitted to HUD, it was learned that no part of property that is proposed to be in a special development like this can be within a floodplain. So we were trying to think of a creative way to make that happen. And what we came up with was creating a private outlot that totally envelops land that is within a floodplain. And that would be reserved for private purposes, for the benefit and use of lot one, to be owned by lot one. And if lot one's ever sold, it would be apart, it would be sold along with that outlot. So that allows the project to move forward with the funding as a HUD project. We're not changing any public dedications. In fact, this certified survey map is actually granting easements to the village of Newglarus. If you look at sheet number three, we're granting a public water main easement as a part of the status of the village because it was constructed on their property without an easement to begin with. If you look at the north line of lot one, there's an existing twenty-five foot, or twenty-foot water main easement that cuts through the north of the property. And that was, I believe, where the water main was originally intended to be installed. And it actually ends up coming along the south lot line and the west property line along the Sugar River State Trail. So really, all we're doing is separating out the floodplain so that the project can move forward. And what was, anything else I had to add?
So, hi, I'm Mike Slavich with WHPC. You have any questions for us as the developers or as the owner?
Is this the boot development?
It is, yes.
So the concern is, is that however the lots were done, it violated something?
Well, there's a HUD requirement that property that is in the floodplain doesn't qualify for the funding and eligibility for that type of a project. And being able to remove that, but still having it be a private amenity that they could put in a trail if they wanted or something to enjoy.
Oh, sure.
You know, it'll be maintained by them so that it won't be a nuisance or the village, it's not a public dedication to the village, so the village would have to maintain it. It just allows for projects to move forward.
Okay.
So what are the limits that of, I don't know if it's called easement, how far do you have to be when you're placing your building away from that piece, that floodplain dedication?
Away from the floodplain?
Yeah, how far, what is the footage for the building to be away from that?
Well, the proposed building is well over forty feet away. It's not even close.
And it's not so much the building as it is the lot itself that is part of the collateral on the loan that cannot be in the floodplain.
I would move approval of survey map, lot forty-two.
One more question. I would second it, and then you can ask your question. Lot two has a floodplain boundary. So is lot two, then, that, the edge of it, is that sort of curvy dotted line, is that the edge of lot two?
No, lot, actually lot, outlot one and lot two actually go all the way to the edge of the Little Sugar River.
I see.
And on sheet one, you'll see what's called a meander line, and you have to monument the path along.
Okay.
And that's not the property either. The floodplain line is just, you're talking about this little curvy line here? Everything from that curvy line on the right to the, to the west, all of that land is in the floodplain. And we don't know at this time if lot two is gonna be developed as, or qualify as a part of a HUD project. And if it does, we would come back at that time to the village for that review to do kind of the same thing. We would do a two-lot certified survey map that would separate out that part of outlot two so that we could qualify again for, you know, we're hoping this project really turns out well.
Well, through the same procedure and separating that out, okay.
Yep, and then the village would again have a chance to look at everything and comment and make a decision if they had time on that lot.
So just to qualify, this is just on lot one and lot one only?
That's correct. Yeah, that a private outlot was adjusted within the limits of lot one.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Item eight, approval, authorized borrowing purchase agreement for purchase fire truck for Newglarus Volunteer Fire Department.
The total, the total cost of the new fire truck is $530,000. The village portion of that is just about 41.33 percent, or $219,000, $219,46.80, eighty-eight cents. We requested quotes from the state bank across Plains and the Bank of Newglarus. The Bank of Newglarus offered the lowest interest rate at 2.37 percent for a ten-year term. We're recommending approval of the purchase agreement and authorizing a borrow. One thing to note is, I learned that we do have a sinking fund of approximately $43,000 that was saved for the future purchase, so we would less, we would borrow less that amount in the sinking fund to cover the cost of our portion of the fire truck.
So I, I actually attended the meeting and, and looked at the different fire trucks when they renewed that, and Andy did a good job of presenting this, they did a great job of talking to the different contractors and explaining what their needs are and what one of their needs are, so. If you have any questions about that, I did have a little bit of information about that, like it's a Pierce truck and, or anything like that, but, so. Just got hoping to get it by the next fire days or whatever annual event that they have.
I would move approval of the purchase agreement and wanting to purchase a fire truck for the Newglarus Volunteer Fire Department with the 41.33 percent minus the, yeah, the sinking fund being the, I'm hoping to be borrowing it.
Forty-three thousand, $574.37, as well as the sinking fund.
Just quickly, do we have any other needs for that money, sinking fund money?
When I spoke with the land, this, this money came from, was it the fire hydrant?
From the 2019 budget when we got rid of the fire hydrant rental, and really that was, that was getting paid to the fire district, so the lot was used for fire needs.
So, do we want, I don't care, a motion, but, or, you didn't make it?
I did, I thought I did, so.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
I was changing it.
No, so, but, so do we want a motion up to a certain amount, or, to borrow a certain amount, or, up to a certain amount or to borrow a certain amount, in other words, the two hundred, whatever it is, dollars minus, did you?
Right, I said, yeah, minus the.
So, so do we want to put that, do we want to put that figure in the motion, the actual, the actual dollar figure?
Do the math.
Sure.
He's got the other number. Oh, no, but I will end that with the Bank of Newglarus.
So, plus the entire sinking fund is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
And that would be in the motion as our limit?
That would be the borrowed amount.
Borrowed amount.
So it's up to that amount, is that correct?
Correct. We'll be borrowing that, that amount and utilizing the sinking fund for the rest.
Yeah, that would be good because interest keeps accruing and I don't add it in there like every month, so they're, obviously a little weak.
Okay. Petra, you made the virtual motion, do you want to run that down or?
I agree to the changes.
Okay.
Do I need to second again?
No.
Agreed for the change, yes.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Public Works, award a bid to Midwest Roofing for replacement of Village Hall roof.
Bidding for the Village Hall roof replacement closed at 10:00 AM on September 12th. The village received two bids. Midwest Roofing out of Dodgeville submitted the low bid, costs approximately $50,000, and the work would be completed in 2019. Funds are included in the current budget. There's a letter in your packet detailing the recommendation from our engineering firm. Staff's recommending awarding the bid to Midwest Roofing.
Okay, we had a note, the second bid was, do you recall what their bid came in at?
Sixty-eight, yeah, sixty-two, eight, sixty-two.
I would move for the approval of Midwest Roofing Construction, now I'll see.
Any more discussion?
Just, I asked this before, but, so these are the only two bids we got.
And I'd like, you know, it's dead, it's reputable.
Yep.
Construction firm out of Dodgeville, so.
And that?
That's good.
I would like reputable.
That becomes tear off, right?
Correct.
So it's, what was going on?
Plus, replacement of the man wood.
Yep, there's a certain amount in there for if, if I'm rotten wood.
Oh, is that rough, just, that's up there now, you know?
I do not.
It's from the eighties maybe, I don't know.
Oh, that would be original. Yeah, that would be original.
I don't know.
I've just been told it's not in the best of shape.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Item B, approval, resolution 1933, hire Peter Heil as utility line worker.
On Tuesday, September 10th, staff interviewed Peter Heil for the vacant line work position. Found review of his application materials, the interview and the reference checks. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution and appointing Peter Heil in the position of line worker. It says in here contingent upon position of background check, that was completed with no issues. And then there's a pre-employment drug screen that we'll have to go through. But we're very happy, well, with the applicant, well-qualified, has significant experience. I think we were very lucky to get, to have him as an applicant. It was the only applicant we had received since we opened, and so we decided to have the interview, and we're happy with the result.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and hire Peter Heil.
I would second that unless you were seconding that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Item C, approval, resolution 1932, final resolution, third admin special assessments.
Strand Engineering delivered to us the final numbers for the special assessments, and so staff is recommending approval of resolution 19-32, permit staff to mail the special assessments to residents. Is it ninety days?
Yeah, due to the, the timing of the billing and when things would go to the tax roll, we did this, I see, back in 2016 as well, what we'll do is we'll send the bill out early October, well, we get it out this month yet, we'll give them till the end of the year to pay without charging interest. Then the interest will start accruing January 1st. They still can pay anytime, but it will go to the tax roll then the following year. So, on the 2028 tax bill, it'll be the first year, six years, it goes over the course of six years. And the policy's been interest at 1% over prime, which would be 6.25. So it gives them a little extra time, but we would start accruing interest on January 1st.
Is there any questions, complaints? The thing from Draper is everything has been very glass, but. Not, but I mean from property owners. It's all right, they know what, oh, okay.
Well, they have an idea from the.
Right, they do, they do, but nobody has said.
They're just looking for their bills.
The only, the only comment we have is.
I'm sure they are.
The only comment we have is someone asked for additional work to be done, so, and increase their special assessment, but they wanted the sidewalk.
I would move for the approval of resolution R19-32.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. Item 10, unfinished business. Item A, discussion consideration, request for financial commitment to fund a new public library facility. Well, I'm gonna start off the discussion then. I just got a couple, one question. Linda, do you have a cutoff date for when you're gonna be done fundraising?
Well, we'd like to have majority of the funds in by January at least, so we can start construction, but we will certainly accept more funds after that to complete any work that we could delay, but at least get the construction started.
Okay. I mean, I just, we want to make sure that the funds are there. If you've got, say, three million dollars that you can build for three million dollars, item, you know, we gotta know what that figure is before we can, you know, start making any kind of plans or anything, you know?
Well, and we will look at that, we will see how the fundraising is going, and, and that would be the next step, is then we have to meet with the architect again and the construction manager at risk, and if we find we're just not getting much past three million, then we're gonna have to make some adjustments, we know that. What we presented last, or two weeks ago, was the concept design. That's what we feel is needed as far as space and amenities for the services that we provide and wish to provide in the future, but we've always said we will look at all the components, how much we can raise, the size of the building, and the operating. And so we will be looking at all three of those again.
Uh, thank you, Linda, I kinda jumped here, so, but I got something else I wanted to say, but I think right now we should call on anybody that wants to speak on the issue. The first one is, back to staff anchor, did you want to speak on the library?
Next, she's for the next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, back there. Jody Holsley.
Hi everyone, I'm Jody Holsley, I think all of you know, almost all, I think I have my new administrator. I just have a couple words about the library. Despite it being small, our library has big impact. In 2018 alone, the library had over 36,000 library visits, borrowed over 68,000 items, and had over 3,600 people visit the library. Here are just a few things that our small library does for our Newglarus residents. It helps to prepare our children for kindergarten through the early literacy programs. It supports teachers with instructional materials to help in the classroom. It helps to neutralize summer reading, or summer learning loss for school-aged children, so it's easier for them to get back in the groove once they get back in school. It brings family and people of all ages, which is something unique, there aren't very many venues that are alcohol-free that can bring people together to meet and socialize and learn. It makes peer-reviewed medical information available when people have to make very difficult decisions in their life, and that they can be informed. It delivers resources to the Newglarus homes supporting our aging population and those that are homebound. It provides access to computers and internet, and there are a lot of people, unfortunately, that can't afford those. It provides resources for job seekers to build skills and prepare for test prep, and it preserves and makes our local history accessible to the world. Those are just a few of the things that our small library does. And I want to thank you for your support. The library inspires learning, connects people, and helps us celebrate our local history. I want to end with one of my favorite quotes from a village resident here. He says, "A community is only as good as it steps, as it steps up for the things that it really values, like education and a public library." Newglarus is a great community. I hope tonight you continue to step up and show that you value the library with funding that will make this new library a reality.
Thank you, Jody. Mary Funsef.
Hi, I'm from the township of Newglarus, and I did live here for a number of years before we did move out to the township, but I too am a longtime library user. I also happen to be one of your co-chairs. So as you were discussing tonight, Roger, that, you know, when is the funding or the fundraising going to be complete? That's an excellent question. So I will not repeat what Jody shared because it's a little similar to what I wanted to share, but first of all, I will tell you, as we go out to talk with the various folks in the community to say, would you like the library, what would you like in a library, would you be willing to fund it, or give us your time to help build, you know, some of the resources that we need for the right library, volunteer, become a co-chair, spread the word, that sort of things. People are telling us, as co-chairs, not telling you from my experience of being the co-chair among my other colleagues who cannot be here tonight, we're hearing they want this building, and because they see a library as more than a building, like Jody said, all the various resources, many of them also talk to us about the piece that the library brings, the social justice to your community. We have a lovely community, we have folks here to protect us, we have a nursing home to care for us, we have a school system that's excellent, we have some excellent churches, lovely places to eat and drink, outdoor recreation, we do have a lovely library, thank goodness from the wonderful librarians and staff for all these years, but it is crowded. The folks who want it to come, they will be willing to fund it, but they need to have a promise that is actually going to be started. And every time we go out, we start the conversation, the first thing they say, well, kind of show us the building, not show us the money, it's show us the building. So we are having a struggle moving forward as a co-chair, and there's many in this room that do know me, they know that I tend to not be quiet, I enjoy socializing, and we've really gained some, folks have said, yes, we will fund it, but we don't believe you. And sincerely, I want to be able to go out and say, this is happening. But unfortunately, in the last year, after we did a lot of hard work and brought together a bunch of money, then suddenly it stopped again and things shifted, and now we can't keep asking for money that isn't necessarily coming through the door. So we are willing, the co-chairs are ready and willing. We've been creating plans, we're ready to put our boots back in the ground, but we need a very strong showing from the board that this is being a commitment from our village board to fund this.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Connie Hendrickson?
Karine.
Pardon me?
Karine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Terrible handwriting. I'm Karine Henderson, I'm a family childcare provider here in town, frequenting the library. So at the last meeting, we heard multiple people stand up and speak and swear the library, and one lone voice in dissent. One of the points he made was about the cost of being physically responsible. He was tasked to go from 2.3 million for 14,800 square feet in 2012, when the bids were done, to 3.5 million for 10,000 square feet today. A simple three-minute internet search provided him with answers. 2012, we were still in a recession, which I also added on during that time, so I do know prices were way down, and by the end of my project, they told me probably would have doubled if I had started four months later. And so cost per foot since 2012 has seen a 40% increase, cost of furnishing, furnishings etc. has also risen dramatically due to the same factors, and now the tariffs. So in essence, because of the continued action of the board since 2012, we are wasting $1.3 million of our community's money, both in taxes and donations. Money that could have been spent on many other valuable programs, our crumbling infrastructure you boys consider most needing to pay for, updating our cars, and our library's operating expenses, the roof, bringing the fire truck. So you currently require a library which serves our entire community from birth to death to come up with 57% of the total cost. Our library's volunteers have fundraised a million dollars and promised to raise another million. Another concerned voice was that if they didn't fundraise enough, then what happens? Well, as they presented and has said again, they will downsize based off of what they can come up with from themselves from the volunteering of fundraising. How many other municipal projects does our board require this amount of fundraising? I also have a board, heard a board member express concern of another recession coming. Well, what better reason to have a high-functioning library? A library that could offer a job training course, resume courses, one-on-one help from a librarian with job searches, quiet space for people to take online courses. To become a licensed family childcare provider, I took classes online, however, I was required to have a certified proctor for my finals. Being in Newglarus, I only knew of one, it was the director of the library. She warned me that there wasn't a quiet place for me to take the test, but it isn't there anyhow because I had no other option. It's simply hard to concentrate, and I would have appreciated one of those study rooms that will be available in this new library instead. So many people assume the library is for children, and indeed it is, because if we instill a lifelong love of books and therefore curiosity in learning our society itself, when we don't, we fail. But it's also our entire community for many different reasons. We just haven't had the opportunity to experience those reasons here in Newglarus because of the size of our library. Thank you.
Holly?
Hi, as you already know, I'm Holly Legu, I'm the manager of the library, and I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the effort that I've seen over the past few weeks, and really that I'm aware of over the lifetime of the project. Village staff, trustees, library staff, library board, volunteers, filling roles like co-chairs, and private citizens have been working really hard to help the trustees prepare to make an informed and thoughtful decision. The library belongs to all of us, and in my short time as its caretaker, I've seen a lot of passion, and I've heard a lot of support, and I just appreciate everyone's commitment to keeping the project moving forward, and I want to say thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Go off. Dolph?
I think there are three decisions we have to make here. First one is the borrowing of one point five million for the library. There are arguments against this, mainly cost, but the reality is, this is, this is the opportunity to do this. This is the closest we've been in years to getting this project done. And I think this is your share. I think it's time to look at the sources of borrowing. You can borrow through a bank, pay no fees, pay monthly interest, reduce your costs. It's prepayable at any time. It really is time that you as a board start to look at altering the cost of funding instead of always going back to the same pot all the time. You can save a lot of money doing it on these sized loans. And this is a real opportunity to do that and to make it easier for you to make this decision. The second is, there's really no point in the village taking on a bigger share of this project unless the village board is also willing to expand the operational budget of the library. We've been doing the same budget for ten years. And now you're asking to build a new building and do the same old thing over again. I don't think that's how it works. I think that it's the obligation of the village library board to come up with a visionary program, how to operate within this new library building. And it's up to the village board to figure out how to fund that. So your question is, since you're working on the budget, you know budgets are tight. Question is, where are we going to get the money for this? Are we going to raise taxes? Hmm? Probably not a good idea. The interesting thing is, you already have the money to fund the library budget. It's called your, your general checkbook. You got a million dollars in there that's doing nothing. It was six hundred thousand dollars only like four and a half years ago, and it's approaching a million right now. Every year that thing grows. You ought to take that money and give it into the library operating budget for a period of, say, three years until we can figure out how to manage this operating budget on a long-term basis, a more sustainable basis. They've already set up a fund to try and supplement the budget. I think that fund needs additional fundraising effort. The reality is, a new building doesn't do it by itself. People come to a building because it's programmed. And programmed is something we've really got to support on this library thing. Lastly, I'm beginning to hear the words that I've been looking for for some time, and that is the library board saying, "We're going to build with our resources, with the resources we have." I think that's a perfect solution to this. We all know where we were in 2001, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. We know where we are today, two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. The obvious question is, can we raise money faster than costs go up? Doesn't seem likely, so let's just get this done. No matter what, we know what optimal is. We've had that defined for us very carefully by the library board for years. But the obvious counter to that is eight thousand feet is bigger than two thousand feet. Ten thousand feet is five times as big as two thousand feet. Our job here is to build the library and to make it an operating function so that this village can have what it desperately needs, and that is a big library resource. So I think you got three kinds of points here. I encourage you to vote yes on all those points.
Thanks, Dolph. Rick Tamkey?
So a couple of points here. Dolph, for starters, has been a mentor and a role model and a teacher to me for many years. And this is a rare time that I disagree with him. Operations. You fund operations from cash flow. You don't fund operations from cash reserves. We've heard talk of recession. I don't know if recession is coming or not. You don't draw down your assets, you don't draw down your cash reserves to fund ongoing operations. If you can't fund a larger library on cash flow, you can't fund it. From there, contrary to Linda's claim before, I have the document that you were given by the library board two weeks ago, two weeks ago. It says in part, "If fundraising falls short, the library board will adjust the concept to conform to available funds before, before proceeding to plan production and bidding." It also tells us that as of next steps, as of late 2019, they will produce construction documents, construction plans. It's previously been established on several occasions that production plans, putting it up to bid, receiving bids, awarding bids, pulling permits takes a good six months. The three point five million dollar price tag is contingent upon ground being broken by spring of 2020. That means there are three months to raise funds. It took the library board seven years to raise the first nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Now we're supposed to believe they're going to raise the next one million dollars in three months before proceeding to production plans, to producing construction plans. I'm sorry, folks, that's a hill we're past. It's not going to happen. We need to use our common sense in that regard. Twenty years ago, when this project started, if you wanted to read a book, you opened up a book. You turn the pages, you put it back on the bookshelf. If you wanted to rent a movie, you went to Blockbuster. You picked something out, you watched it, you hoped it was good, you returned it the next day. Twenty years ago, one percent of American households had broadband internet access in the home. Today, you can read a book as a book, an audio book, you can download it to your Kindle. You can't find a Blockbuster video, but you can log onto Netflix or Hulu or Amazon. Seventy-three percent of American households have broadband internet access. Seventeen percent more have it through their devices, through their smartphones. Ninety percent have internet access in the home. Those are three core services of the library. Books, video rentals, internet access. It's going to take twenty years to pay for this. Where are we going to be in those regards twenty years from now? If it's ninety percent that have internet access today, it's going to be ninety-five, ninety-eight, ninety-nine. We don't know. And have all kinds of ways to access books, movies, et cetera. This is a building, if I can find it, that is built for today and for the past, with rows and rows of bookshelves and computer terminals. That's not what we're going to need twenty years from now. Stick to the million dollars in borrowing. Build a building that's still going to be relevant twenty years from now. You don't need three point five million dollars to do that. Thank you.
Victoria?
My name's Victoria, I'm a village resident. I've heard a lot of passion for a new library, which is a really important thing. If anybody knows that it's hard to get butts and seats for projects, problem for you guys. But I've also heard a lot of pressure and blame being put specifically on the village board to make it happen by committing more and more taxpayer dollars. In the meantime, the donations the library board has already received are not being done justice as that money was not aging well in the, in time. For village residents, donations are a voluntary act. Paying back the village debts is a mandatory one. The library board is here asking you to force village residents to do something they haven't been willing to do voluntarily in sufficient quantity. Please stick to the original one million dollars. Thank you.
Yes, Dolph?
Just one comment. It's very common in the industry that I come from to, to take operating costs during the construction period and the break-in period. It even has a name, it's called capitalizing operating expenses. You do it within, it seems to me it's a perfectly appropriate thing to get this library robust program up off the ground to capitalize those expenses, and that means taking it out of your general fund. If you're going to capitalize operating expenses for a few years, you need to know what village services you're going to take from after that few years is up. Is it going to be police? Is it going to be fire? Is it going to be roads? What are we going to take from after that capitalization period is done? Don't do it.
I want to throw something else to the board.
Can I make something? I mean, I just would like to, I just want to, I just want to say, three people on this board are all new. So I hope that, it's been a rough couple of weeks for me trying to figure this out, so. And I think I'm not the only one. So we're going to do the best we can and we're going to hope that we can end this with a good outcome. But, I don't know. I just, I, I don't want people, I want the fighting to stop. That's what it feels like to me. It's like these, there's two sides of the story. There's always going to be two sides of the story. And I just want to make sure that people respect and care about one another first. That's what I want to say. Because in my two weeks of trying to figure this out, I have made a lot of new friends and learned a lot of things, and I've heard stuff from both sides of the story. So I'm going to do the best I can, if I can say that.
Well, what I was going to throw out to the board is, if this board decides to go ahead with a million and a half borrowing, I would like to see it do a dollar-for-dollar match up to and not to exceed a million and a half. If the library board raises one point two million, we borrow one point two million and they got to come forward with it to deal with. I'm just throwing that out, I'm not making that as a motion, but that's what I would like to see. Because I.
Can, can, if both of us were all been sitting in the back and you say that again?
That's why you should set the front row off. I said, I'd like to, I'm not, maybe this is a motion or anything, but I'm just putting out to the board that I'd like to see it do a dollar-for-dollar match up to and not, not to exceed a million and a half if the board decides to go to the borrowing a million and a half.
Okay.
Because I'm, you know, if we commit to a million and a half and fundraising falls short and, you know, they raise one point two million, all of a sudden the taxpayers are the biggest financial contributors to this project. So I would be more than willing, if, you know, if they can raise another half a million, we can come up with another half a million.
So can I, can I get clarification on what you're saying? So you're saying that we would pose, we would put out there that we will match them dollar-for-dollar up to one point five million? So they would need to raise?
One point what?
One point five million, million and a half.
Million and a half, okay.
If the board decides to go that.
So, so that would mean that they would have to raise a million to get a million from us? Or they'd have, if they raised seven hundred and fifty thousand, we would give seven hundred and fifty?
They already have a million.
Right.
And we have a million that we committed to.
We hadn't committed to a million.
Well, we got to re, we got to recommit to it.
So, so I think there's, so what I'm, what I'm hearing from you, I think there's two different issues here. I think there's, there's two different issues here. Are we thinking, so if we go back to the original, and I did, I had printed off the original, the original vote that existed back in 2014. And it was for a million dollars and forty thousand dollars. And then I also learned recently that there was a sinking fund that was used to pay for the, for the Glarner Park thing.
Survey.
Survey. And that, that, that we, that we had at one time, the board, I can't say we, because the majority of the board that had these discussions was not here. But at one time it was discussed that the million forty thousand would be restored as would the funding that was lost due to exploring the Glarner Park. But that that was tabled and not voted on. So that, that, that does not currently exist. Currently, there is, from my understanding, no commitment from the.
Yeah, reimbursement, remember we brought it on.
My understanding, after reviewing the minutes, is that there was a motion to reimburse the village, sorry, the library for the expenses related to preparing Glarner Park, the Glarner Park site. That motion did pass at the time Brian Gaddow asked for time while the twenty, until the 2019 budget was finalized in order to have those final numbers. I spoke with Lynn and no, no reimbursement has yet occurred. That motion is still valid. I mean, that's the village board has instructed to make them whole from those costs. The million dollars, the previous borrow commitment was rescinded and was not reaffirmed. Roger's proposal of up to, a matching up to one and a half million would essentially reaffirm that million-dollar borrow because the library has already fundraised one million dollars.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's the clarification that you.
I would be supportive of your idea, Roger.
Well, he said, I didn't make a motion, I just figured out yours, so.
Well, yeah, I'm not second to the ink, because I can't, but I'm just saying. But I think what we really, we have to make a decision tonight.
I absolutely.
I disagree. And I think we need a lot more information before I can make a decision.
Okay.
I'm not against the project, I just need more information. Well, I agree with Agra, I think we need to make a decision tonight. We've kicked this around a long time.
And I absolutely agree, we need to make a decision tonight, yeah. We had two weeks knowing that this was going to come down to tonight, and.
Yeah, we've got the borrowing, the effects of borrowing on down the line.
Usually discuss the effects of borrowing, because I have looked at that and I have talked to, there are positive views on that. We have a lot of positive people here, and that's wonderful. We have a couple of other people with other views.
Well, I, I didn't mean that.
Yeah.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean we had to make a decision on the actual borrowing process.
Oh, great, okay.
Just the decision on the commitment to fund.
Right, right, right.
The rest of it, we have sufficient time to check that out, get the, get the, you know, various costs from the bond sales for borrowing, straight borrowing from a financial institution. So I think that's the second step.
Right.
First, we have to make the commitment. And I'm going to make a motion that we, that we, for sake of discussion, that we approve Roger's concept of matching, matching dollar amount up to one point five million dollars based on what the fundraising brings in. You can put that in whatever, whatever you want.
Do you want to request that it's changed to the resolution nineteen dash thirty-four, where it reads, "And now therefore..."
Let me just say this.
Sure.
Remind of that. I think it's somewhat, somewhat the same thing.
Okay.
Because of the contingencies for the, for the one point five million dollar commitment in that, the three contingencies would also be covered in the same, same general way. They don't make the money, they don't get the, they don't get the money. So I think this will be a greater incentive for fundraising.
I would like to immediately match. I would say that they raise one point two five, or they raise two point, two hundred and fifty thousand, we begin matching after that. However, in total, I'm not in favor of borrowing that at all. I just have a couple of things I wanted to say.
I would like a second motion first.
Okay, so second thing, yeah. Okay, so I wanted to share with you that it's been a very long number of years going through all of this. So I do research on my own, I make decisions on my own. Number one, when I ran for village board this last time, I decided that I was not going to get my signatures door-to-door, but I was going to go to houses that I did not know. And I had a spreadsheet, which no one has ever wanted, I've offered that, of what citizens have said. I had a variety of questions regarding parking, regarding the library, regarding infrastructure across the board. I stopped at thirty-six homes of people I did not know. And I asked them and I checked off on my list. And the overwhelming majority, I got twenty-four to twenty-eight responses, some people didn't want their names on it, was that the library was too big and that they felt that we could be innovative and work with something smaller. So that shaped my attitude. I stopped in places like the taverns, the stores, people that lived in not-so-great houses. I stopped everywhere, doors that shut on me, people who said they didn't want to talk to me, and people that didn't talk to me. I got a whole different perspective of what people thought, different, from my home. I wear a different hat when I sit here. The other thing is, is I looked up the American Library Association survey of 2016, where thirty-five percent of U.S. libraries offer one-on-one digital technology with library staff there in a kiosk. And what they noticed, by hiring Pew Research to do this, is that library use in a physical brick-and-mortar building is down, but the library website use is up. They interviewed twenty-seven hundred people. We have to build innovatively, we have to build in a sense of beginning to establish a structure that's going to be viable, because I don't see in twenty years New Glarus actually moving forward. The other thing is, is this community is not growing. It is the same group of people who pay the same pot of taxes. So if we are eager to. So if we are eager to build, then I say we build with what we have, what we committed, and what the taxpayers think is going to be given to the library. We do not slip it under the rug and add another half a million dollars onto the little lady who can't afford to pay her tax bill and get her groceries. It is not fair.
Slipping something under the rug, that's a pretty low blow...
It is.
To this board.
It is.
And I don't understand where that's coming from.
It is.
What is, how is slipping, how is the discussions we've been having two weeks ago tonight, and even prior to that, slipping something under the rug when this is absolutely public?
Because the little people I have gathered, that I've asked, are not aware of what's going on. Why? Maybe they don't have Wi-Fi. Why? Maybe they're not as socially sound.
That's us slipping it under the rug?
No, I'm not saying that, I don't mean it in a negative way.
I think you are, I resent that.
Okay, don't resent it, it's a figure of speech. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's doing something that has not necessarily been on the public referendum. So I can't do that to people, I can't go to bed at night thinking, we've already borrowed a million, now we're gonna give them something else that there is in their, you know, is on their, on their fiscal agenda. It's not fair.
I understand your concern for the financial part, okay? I understand that 100%, I do not understand you're saying that this is not out in the public, that the little people aren't aware of this. I could walk into any tavern in town tonight and ask how many people are in favor of a library, I'd probably get thrown out, probably buying me a beer. I, I get that, I've been here 73 years.
Been here 40.
But nobody, nobody is slipping anything under the rug. This has been on the, on the public agenda for, forever.
I guess under the public, under the voting room. I feel more confident in knowing that, that build, in a sense that perhaps you might want to expand, then expand. I don't know what the, I don't know what the operational budget is, can you afford a 10,000? I don't know what it is, I don't, I don't have any numbers, I, I don't know what the architectural plan is to, you know, to run the building. I, I can't responsibly give that money when I have so many what ifs, I don't knows.
But essentially, all those things are, are there.
No.
I, I haven't seen them, Chuck.
No, I have, I have a plan here.
Do you, do you have an operational budget?
I think the operational budget, the current operational budget is in existence. No, I don't have a future operational budget.
The only figures that I know of were put in our slot today. What about the stuff we got two weeks ago?
We didn't get operational budget two weeks ago, but what we got...
No, we never got it.
What we got, what we got was, and, and this was brought forward, is we did get that they had talked operational budgets with past buildings. And their plans for future operations and how they're going to adjust that, or work with that, are in this. And I did just get that into the mailbox yesterday, so, but that's what that is. But my concern is too, and it goes a little bit back more to what, I believe her name was, Victoria said too, is, is we do have to always be clear of, or think about the fact that being forced to do something and voluntarily doing something are two different things. And so if, if that's what Peggy's trying to say, is, is that if people want the library, they'll give to the library and, and then, so the funding should come through. I mean, they should be able to go out and fundraise that amount of money, then if, if that's what people want. And then that will tell the board how much they want us to give, I guess. And, I guess, I, I think that is about... But I definitely understand, Peggy, what you're saying about putting the burden on the taxpayer. And if people want a library, they'll donate, and they'll write a check, they've got the location, we've decided that. And we've all pretty much, I think from what I gather, agreed to making them whole. And then the option of matching them is a different play. I mean, is that, so whatever they're able to fundraise will tell us how much more we're gonna borrow over where we made them whole. Is that kind of, am I getting that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our, our country actually has been built on public infrastructure. It's been built on public education, it's been built on spreading the, the cost of, of the common good in things, spoiler, parks, whatever, across the, as if, you know, maybe property tax isn't the best way, but it's what we've got.
Right.
So, that's the way we fund these things. The proverbial little lady might live in that $500,000 house on our, on our form there, would pay $4 a month toward the library as that it was, oh, $50 a year for that. And, you know, I, I think that's, that's okay. Social Security goes up more than that, or has the last year or two.
Every person would pay $9, roughly $9 a month.
Every would be $9, at that, the higher end, yeah.
Maybe.
The $200,000 house, which is a, you know, mid-lives houses are on the assessment roll of undervalued, for what they're worth, so it's a pretty nice house.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but when you say there is another way, there is another way, there's fundraising, which is what we're asking them basically to do, is fundraise.
And become public-private lately, which is what we're doing. We're sharing, sharing that burden with those that can and want to, will give lots more than that.
Right.
To the project. Those that don't want to or can afford it, don't need to, of course, and, but, but there's got to be a little bit of...
I can count four times where we have said things, the, the library has said things like, "Give us a location so we can show that we have support, and then we'll get the funds." Okay, so we did that. "Give us the million so we can get the funds and show the support." We did that. Now it's, "Give us $500,000 more so we can show that we have the support." Well, what happened to the support that was supposed to happen in those two other options? Wasn't it there, or I, I don't know?
Lots of things happened, I mean, we had a, we had a whole disruption of the community. We had the Glarner Park thing, we had, we had, we had people going to the, to the media in Madison and hyping all kinds of trashy lies, claiming that, that the library board was corrupt, the village board was corrupt. People kind of got sick of the whole thing, I think, and said, "Now we gotta know." That's when they said, "Now we need to know, are we gonna do this or not?" But I think, but I think, I think if you look at it realistically, Tammy's thoughts really make this the motion. They really make a sort of a vote, do we support this or not, the, the community? So if the funds don't come in, okay, that's voting, voting with your dollars. If they do come in, all right, the support's there.
Well, it's similar to, I give every year to cancer research, they don't have a cure, but I give. The library doesn't necessarily need a location or what have you, if you donate to the library because you believe in it and you don't necessarily have the half a million, it doesn't, I don't think that half a million is gonna determine whether or not you have the support. There's no cure for cancer at this point, I'm still donating, they don't have an answer, the library board... What I'm trying to say is that the donors are gonna donate, as Tammy said, regardless. The donors are going to donate. Where have they, where have all the donors been, seven and a half years and it didn't get to a million at that point?
No, hard close, totally.
So Peggy, yeah, can we, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I do, I do. But in the, in the interest of, we want to make a decision tonight, is that, I mean, that's my... So there, there, so is your concern, is your concern the matching dollars?
My concern is the borrowing in general, my concern is the levy limit, and my concern is building for the future innovatively, not necessarily brick and mortar.
I will say, I disagree with your thoughts on, and other thoughts expressed on the lack of use of libraries and library materials.
I just look for...
No, I understand, but a lot of those facts and figures are skewed in that, they're skewed towards larger, larger municipalities and cities, and we're out here as rural people, and we have a greater need for those things, in, in my opinion, because we don't have all the other, the accessibility to all the other things that larger cities or, or big municipalities have. There is also just a value, there is a value in having a library, a place where people can go.
I totally agree.
Whether it be to check out a book, or, or go to various programs. We know that people go to Verona, Monroe, because they, they need and want these programs, and we can't offer them here right now, in many cases, just do this, to space.
More people that can't get to a library, you know, might have drug addicts and options at home that might not... The, the point is, is that I'm not advocating for no library. I'm, I'm not advocating for that, I've been on this long enough to know. I'm advocating for responsible fiscal funding of the village every place. And that's, that's what all I'm looking at, is just to have our jobs in a row, our park finances in a row, we have a lot of things coming down the pipe, and you have the money. So get going, I thought, get going. I've kind of felt sorry for that boy here that spoke last week about, you know, that he donated whatever his money's to the library, and what, is he a freshman now? And because of the, you know, because of our lack of getting it off the ground, that kid's probably not, you know, he might be a junior before he actually sees the library, because it's been so, you know, it's, it's been so put on the burner, because the size isn't enough, and this isn't enough, and the money isn't enough, you know. Yeah, I wanna drive a Donali, but I can't, I drive a 2004, so, you know, do what you can do. And I'm, I've always been that way, I, I come from a family of, I, we single parent from, who made, we didn't have a lot of money, and that probably has colored my world.
I also, not against library, but I really hesitate at switching motions on this. To, to, I agree with what you're saying, but I'm not gonna make a decision on that tonight. Based upon, yeah, what you say, I wanna pick it over first.
Well, we have a motion to second the board.
Yes, I know.
They have to vote.
I know that.
It's a yea or nay at this point, am I not understanding that? Or the motion, right? Or the motion can be amended, from my understanding of Rogers' rules.
Sure, there's a number thing, four numbers could choose to do at this point, but...
I would like to call the question.
Me, second? Second. Okay. This is just a vote to vote?
A vote to vote, yeah.
On the first floor?
Just trying to see if it requires your motion, and the motion and a vote.
Match the funds.
This is, this is the match of funds, since they've raised a million, they'll get their million, and we've already, they'll get...
Two thirds.
Right, go ahead.
I'm just, uh, two thirds vote is required.
Maybe it's Mike, Mike doesn't understand. I, I, I'm a little bit puzzled, yeah, now that, is this, is the motion to meet the matching funds raised by the library?
The motion on the floor right now is, is a motion to call a question, which is ending debate immediately, and it was seconded, so the vote is held immediately, so...
We gotta vote on it first.
Correct, so no more discussion can be had, you have to vote on, call a question immediately, and a two thirds vote is required to bring the previous motion to an immediate vote.
Can you repeat the previous motion one more time, and maybe I'll vote on it?
Yeah.
Repeat the motion that's been made, can we repeat this?
We, we have to vote on the motion of calling the question.
Yes.
First, right? And she can repeat it?
Correct.
Oh, she can't repeat it until we say...
We can, you can repeat it.
Thank you.
And a motion by Chuck, through Rogers' concept, which was to fund matching, the library raises 1.2, and the village grows 1.5 million. So village board matching library funding up to 1.5 million. Second, fine, Pedro.
And read that first part again.
I just said, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh.
For the village board to match the library board's contribution up to 1.5 million.
Read the law, I'm gonna spread.
Michael Bell. Voting on the call, call question.
Vote to end debate on the previous question.
I vote not to end the debate.
Mike, can you answer it?
No.
Peggy?
No.
Tammy?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Curious.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
The bar is a two thirds majority. So now the previous motion is back on the table for discussion.
So now what's on the table for discussion?
Yeah, recurring motion.
What do you need to, like, you see to not be made?
I'm trying to gather all my thoughts here, on how to present this. My understanding is we can, we can go ahead and vote in and say, yes, we are gonna commit a million dollars. And then at a later point, we can also vote to increase it to more.
No.
No, we cannot do something along that line.
I mean, not, not with the way this motion was...
No, without this motion. This motion is straight up, you know, match, matching, make a break.
Because recently, Mike, we already committed to the million dollars, the first million dollars.
We did?
Oh, yeah, the board did way back.
A long time ago.
And then it got rescinded.
So I think what...
Well, and I think it had been even before that, before I got on the board, there had been...
Oh, yeah, this was back in, when James Salty was president.
Yeah, with James Salty, it's fine. Okay, so I think what, what, if I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna try to clarify things again and try to help. I think what, what is going on is, is that some, some people would like to vote to risk, and to restore the million forty, or the million that we had, and you, and do a separate motion for the 500,000 extra, is that...
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm looking at.
So, so there's people who are comfortable with restoring the million and everything that they lost, right? And then, and then there's the extra 500,000, it's a separate issue, and it's currently not a separate issue, and that's what the concern is, am I...
Yeah, yeah.
And what, is that what I'm understanding?
Where did that come from?
From, from me listening to what they're saying and providing them feedback. So the motion that we have on the table is to match dollar for dollar. So the million would come back because they've already raised a million. That will, if they raise up to $500,000 more, we would match that 500,000. The concern of our people who didn't, weren't comfortable is, is that they're comfortable with the million, they're not comfortable with the 500,000, maybe whether it's matched or not, or they need more time to think about whether or not they want to do that. But they are comfortable in giving back the million, do I kind of have...
What you're saying is that we could get something done. We could reinstate the million forty thousand with a motion.
With a motion.
We could vote on the half a million.
Or, yeah, we could, yes.
And then at some point, we could negotiate how that half a million could be raised, whether it be matching dollar for dollar, is that possible?
There's a motion, there's a current motion on the floor.
We've got to finish the motion that's on the floor.
So any changes you want to make to the current motion on the floor, you have to make a motion to amend.
To amend the motion, okay.
So. I would like to amend the motion to restore the million forty thousand that was voted on in the past by the public to the library. And. I'm not sure what to do.
We just need some finesse. So you're making a motion to amend, you're making a motion to amend the main motion, to change it from a, a matching contribution up to one and a half million to a contribution of one million dollars.
Right. And then there would be, I understand, I'm trying. And then there would be option to discuss, it would be taking the matching funds off the table is basically what I was doing with that motion.
That is, you'd be, you'd be reducing, you'd be doing two things. You would be reducing the maximum amount to one million dollars, and you would be removing the matching portion of it. So it would be a straight approval of a one million dollar.
What about the 40,000 we all do?
I'm unsure what that 40,000.
So the original vote, the original vote is for 1 million 40,000 dollars, so that's what I was trying to restore that.
Sure.
So that's why the million.
So 1 million forty?
Yeah, right, okay. So, and then, so that's what, can I, so then someone would have to, so do I have the wording right yet? I, I would like to make a motion to amend.
Before you do that, Tammy, I just want to make sure with our parliamentary, is this according, I believe so, to parliamentary procedure or Robert's rules, that someone can amend someone else's motion?
A motion to amend is the process used to change a motion under consideration. Perhaps you like the idea proposed, but not exactly as offered. So a motion to amend is, is the method for another member to change the motion, the main motion. So if the, a motion to amend fails, the original motion remains on the table. If the motion to amend passes, that becomes the parent motion, the main motion.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Tammy. Suppose I screw that all up.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion on the table to restore the 1 million 40,000 dollars.
Ah, point of order.
Point of order.
What if I just withdraw the motion?
Tammy would have to seat the floor, and then you can, you can, until, until a vote has been called, you can rescind the motion.
That's the easiest way out of this.
If you rescind it, then she can make her motion, and it would be the main motion. If you do rescind it.
All right, then I'm not going to.
It's a question of any maker motion. It's, it's just a question of whether you want to see if the amendment passes, and the main, the current main motion stays on the floor, or if you're willing to rescind that main motion and leave it open to a, a new motion being made. If a motion to amend fails, your original motion would then be voted on.
I'm going to rescind that motion. Whoever seconded this.
Okay, more confused. So now there's no motion for much?
No more on the floor. Well, it's a second.
So my motion would be, now you can just start, straight out make a motion.
Just agree.
I can find that one.
Or don't, or you don't. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, Pedro, you have your right to, I say.
Testing my parliamentary knowledge right now.
Well, that's okay, we're testing every nerve in my body right now, so.
Sorry. So you can. Without going all the way back to my book, my understanding is that you can withdraw your motion. I'm looking up Robert's rules online real quick.
And if the person who seconded, seconded it doesn't want to.
Time may come when you make a motion that turns out to, you don't really want it to be considered, but the chair has stayed the motion, and it now technically belongs to the group. In such a like, like this, a special request is available only to the maker of the motion. You can request that the motion be withdrawn or changed. The chair then needs only to announce that you have made the request and ask for unanimous consent. If someone objects, the chair can put the question to a vote, or you or any member can move that the assembly grant the request to withdraw the motion. Then the chairman puts the question to withdraw the motion to vote. So without unanimous consent to withdraw the motion, it would go to a vote to withdraw the motion.
Okay, so we need unanimous consent to withdraw the motion, so we would have to take a vote to withdraw the motion, and we have to.
Uh, the chair, the chair can ask for unanimous consent, and if a member objects, which time we would move forward a vote to withdraw the motion.
So it still could be withdrawn with a majority vote?
Correct. Withdrawn a motion as if, as if it was never made.
Where does the unanimous consent come in?
Yeah.
Uh, if the body agrees that the motion can be withdrawn by unanimous consent, the vote is not necessary. If one member objects.
To save that little extra.
If one member objects to unanimous consent, it moves on to a, the chair can call for a vote to withdraw the motion.
So right now, the way that I understand it is, it's on the floor, and Chuck is withdrawing this motion, but we have to have a vote on that, is that correct?
So the benefit of withdrawing a motion, for example, is if Chuck did not withdraw, there is a vote on the motion, and that motion failed. The only way to bring that motion up again would be a motion to reconsider, which is a, a different process. If the motion is, is withdrawn, that same motion can be made at the same meeting without a motion to reconsider.
So then withdrawing actually allows us to go on, whereas if we vote and doesn't, we would lose the ability to.
You can't vote on the same motion twice at the same meeting without a motion to reconsider, which has to be made by the prevailing side of the previous vote.
No.
The, the motion.
So the main motion remains on the table.
And, and you, and my amendment is?
Have not yet completed.
Okay. And do I make that before we vote, or?
Yes. So your motion, just to clarify your language, your motion to amend, you'd like, you'd like to amend the motion to have the village to commit to a 1 million 40,000 dollar borrow.
Borrow. And?
No more than a million 40,000 dollar borrow with no requirement for matching, is essentially what you're asking for.
Right, but then we cannot then talk about that then for the rest of the night either? The other, the other, we can't talk about that at all? Like after, if that, the matching, we can't talk about that at all then?
Another motion could be made to amend the motion again.
So like, we couldn't pass the one and then talk about the other, the other 500, there's a separate issue?
You, the amendment motion on, on the table would be a borrow for 1 million 40,000 dollars, and that's what the debate would center around.
Okay.
Obviously, the, the borrow is, is the agenda item. So in general, you can discuss what level of borrowing the board would like to commit to. So another motion to amend would be in order.
So if we vote on 1.1 million 40,000 dollars and get that vote accomplished, can we place on the table the 500,000, um, matching for discussion? Or can we table that portion and discuss later?
Well, they're essentially. Correct. So a, a motion to amend has not yet been made, so that's.
Try.
So I guess we should probably stick with that, and we can work.
So my motion to amend the current idea to, how would I word that? To, to restore the 1 million 40,000 dollars.
I think we want to stay away from restore.
Okay, to borrow up to 1 million 40,000 dollars for this library project. And somebody has to second.
I'll second.
Now the motion to amend is on the table, and that will change the main motion from what was previously discussed to, it will change it to a borrow, a commitment of 1 million 40,000 dollars for the village to borrow towards the project. Just to clarify for everyone, a yes vote is a vote to approve the amendment to the motion, a no vote is a vote to reject the amendment to the motion.
The yes vote would be for 1 million 40,000?
1 million 40,000.
Okay. Are we ready? Michael Bell.
Yes.
Michael Gancher.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yeah.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Carlson.
No.
Pedro Strick.
No.
And Roger Turtman.
Yes.
Motion carries back to.
So now the motion on the table is a village commitment of 1 million 40,000 dollars. So at this point, discussion can continue on that. A member could make another motion to amend.
So we have to vote again on the 40,000?
Correct, because now the motion has been changed, the main motion has been changed.
Okay.
So now would be the, if there, if a board member has another idea of how they would like this to go, there would be another, this is now the, that opportunity.
Well, I'll make a motion that you threw the 1 million 40,000 dollar award.
Don't need the motion, so the motion's already on the table, so.
Now we just need to.
There's no more debate.
We're running, we're thinking.
Oh, okay, okay, absolutely. I'm totally confused.
But to Tammy's point, if there's a unique way that you were thinking of to address the additional 500,000, now would be the time to do so.
I think the unique way was the matching fund, but I, I don't know if everybody's ready for that. That's what my concern was, is that I wanted to get something done, and I think that, I, I think that that just needs to be separated from that, and that's why I did what I did. It's not a no, 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 it's a, if we get the 1 million 40 committed to, and then let's talk about the 500,000, because they are separate issues for some people. And that's all I'm trying to do, is get something done, because that's what everybody wants, is something.
So is there a way that we can throw on the board or on the agenda for next time, a discussion over, probably an additional 500,000, 500,000 dollars?
Mm-hmm. I would, yeah, make the motion to indefinitely.
Motion's always pleaded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, continue, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I would like to make the motion to postpone indefinitely the decision to fund the extra 500,000 dollars.
That's not on the table yet.
That's not, yeah, that part's not.
What's on the table?
The 1 million 40,000.
Oh, I thought we voted on that.
The motion to amend the main motion was voted on, now we have to vote on the.
Oh, okay.
Or as amended.
Okay.
If there's no other discussion, you can ask to call a roll.
Okay. Let's call the rule one, please.
Michael Bell, and this is, just so everybody knows, they're voting on the amended motion which approves the 1 million 40,000.
Commitment of 1 million 40,000 dollars to the library project.
Yes.
Mike Gancher.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yeah.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Carlson.
Yes.
Pedro Strick.
No.
Roger Turtman.
Yes.
Motion carries back to.
Okay. So Mr. Parliamentary, what did we hold on?
Q and A. The, you don't need to make a motion to postpone, because it's not, it's not, it's not on the agenda, that body has acted on the agenda item at this point, we would move on. If there's a request to put a discussion of additional funding on a future agenda, then we would discuss it at that time.
And that should just be. Yep, I'll, let's do that, I'm excited.
So I'll just take it as the bodies instruct me to place another agenda item on a future agenda, maybe the next, the next agenda for additional funding.
The next agenda is actual for first for the budget?
But it's pretty good, right? I mean. Where you're at.
We'll have to, we have to deal with business as it comes, so. So, do you know? That, that's a feeling I'm taking from the board.
I appreciate your questions.
Probably hard work.
Is there a request to use do that?
I'll, I'll take it as a direction to place it, as if someone sent me an email, it's the same.
So. Are we done?
Tweet.
Yes. Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
I will be discussing consideration Louis' policy regarding late permit applications. Now back up.
Now back up. It just seems like such an easy topic. So I represent the Chamber of Commerce, and I've been in the position for six months, and I've requested five or six different special event permits in that time, so I feel like I've got a pretty good handle on what it entails. So I just have a couple points for your consideration before you make any decisions on that. Currently, the current setup says that completed applications must be received no less than one month prior to the Public Works Public Safety Meeting. That's it. Which technically means, you know, whatever the Public Works meeting is August 1st, my event's August 2nd, it'd still be good, right? But no, obviously not, it still needs to go to Village Board, what if there's changes? So if nothing else, the description, the wording needs to be updated, to be clear. My recommendation would actually be to adopt just a flat, like say, two months. Your application has to be in at least two months before your event, or you'll have to pay this late fee. I think that'll be a lot easier for the general public to understand, too. They won't have to go search for calendars and figure out dates. I would also recommend helping up that late fee to 200 to 250, I think that's enough that it would, it would hurt more, but not, you know, not destroy any of these little nonprofit organizations either. It would, I think it would help them take it more seriously. And then my last point is that if this is, if you do move to like a flat two month cutoff, I also suggest saying that if it's in three weeks before your event, it's just not happening. You know, it's, it's harsh, but the real, the reality of it is that you, you guys need time to review it, police needs time to review it, everybody has to review it, and it's, you can't just force it on you. So I would have a definite two week, three week, it's not happening no matter how much you pay. And then annually, I suggest that the village do some sort of educational piece. So you have a Facebook post, you email last year's permit applications, and you have some sort of public announcement in the newspaper saying, hey, everybody, here it is, if you're going to do this, pass it P and two months ahead of time, otherwise you pay this. Otherwise, you pay this. And that way then, when somebody doesn't do it right, you've got something to point to and you can say, well, we, we warned you and we published it here and here. So you don't look back at that, guys. That's my take on it. If you have any questions on what it's like to ask a comment, someone know.
I liked everything she said.
She did too.
Very helpful, thank you.
You're okay with that? You're okay with that, uh?
Oh, yes.
Was that time on it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the chamber should be on top of it. We, we should. And to be honest, sometimes we get people approach us to do events and it would be really handy to be able to say, gosh, I'd love to help you, but, because that's not enough time for us either.
Great, okay, good.
It's, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, the chamber, um, has tended to be on time. It's, it's been other smaller groups without staff people, you know, doing some more volunteer kinds of events, uh, in my reflection that have had the problem. So I, I like the change of wording certainly, um, because that is more easier to figure out when the exact date is. But I don't know.
I definitely get what.
Volunteer groups is tricky.
I get it. And I get what you're saying, but yet there is still some responsibility here that, that has to exist and I mean, I don't, I don't like being a parent right now either. It's been a pretty rough week being a parent in this position right now and that's what it's felt like. So, but the reality is, is that people have to be responsible and they have to understand that there are other people involved. And so I understand what you're saying, Pedro, but I really think that we have to, we have to buckle down on this and most of us are in some way are friends with or are working with all the people that do all of this. We just have to remind them that this is out there and let them know. So I just, I think that this is a probably we gotta go with this because it was getting to be where they're like, oh, yeah, you know, I, I mean, honestly, it was kind of hitting where they were getting too comfortable to take advantage of the fact that we were just gonna pay it.
Do we need a motion to do something other than doing one or maybe have a resolution or orders? I guess orders changed, right?
Is this codified ordinance?
I don't believe that these are codified.
Or, or just whatever it takes, put it on the.
We can bring back, uh. We can bring back a drafted edits, whatever policy or procedure that we need to change to formally adopt.
I guess one question I might have, I think it came up most recently with, uh, street use permit, actually. It wasn't a special event permit. So do you want that same language on street use permits, park use permits, special event permits?
Yes.
All of them?
Okay, okay. It's okay.
Any more discussion on this item?
Would it be fairly easy for you to get a list of people that usually ask for them and get them the information?
I think mailing them a letter would be awesome if we could do that, just let them know that we had, that we've put this in place and that we would certainly, you know.
Yep, it's been our intention, it's been our intention ever since this conversation has started that whatever came of it, we would, we would email all, the past recipients, the past year's recipients, ones that we receive, we all, we know are gonna receive and let them know if those changes.
And if we do this and Rebecca does this, then they'll know.
It's gonna get real conservative and that'll make, that'll help people a lot. And there's nothing wrong with planning more than we did.
Joe?
Yeah, the only thing that I have is a couple of times already this year since I've been here, I have dealt with this, is we have applications that come in a little bit late. But I need something on there to state which application we accept first. Is that gonna be priority? In a situation, we've had permits already in. Uh, they're approved. Next thing you know, we have another permit that's put in. They put a tent up there and they were marching right down the same street. What's gonna take priority? And that needs to be decided. If your permit's in, your permit's in. The other permit's out. Find a new place. We gotta clarify that a little bit more because like now we have a homecoming parade. The homecoming parade permit was in. And the issue of it was is then we got the permit from the chamber stating that they wanted to have Oktoberfest on First Street. They were marching down First Street. The one before that was Music Fest and we had the Memorial Day Parade. Memorial Day Parade was already permitted. And then we gave it permit and they were both willing as the route to change. Now, I think they need to look at that because what's, I understand the priority of the amount of people to come. But I think also that priority of being in the glares and being able to march down your own Main Street or for veterans to march down Main Street and be recognized at Memorial ought to be something that somebody ought to take into consideration. Yeah, because of the highway, it's a, I guess, uh, becomes a more complex problem, Gancher's pretty proud. And I've already dealt with this twice since I've been here, so, and they were both cooperative. I had to go see everybody and we worked out, but it's the point of. I would like to see in that permit, something stating, first one is, first one gets.
I, I would agree with that. I think first one in first.
Now, the bad thing about that is, I hate to tell you this, is they could start putting in permits today for next year, but it's not my.
Well.
Because that thing's happened every year.
In the case of Memorial Day.
Something else has to be.
There's nothing, there's no other event now than Memorial Day.
Music Fest.
Music Fest happens. That's what happened. They put the tents out.
Right, but it's done.
No, they didn't have the tents down.
I know, but I'm saying there's no event in the tent on Monday.
Right.
So couldn't it be their responsibility, and I think I've said this before, to get that tent down?
And that would be.
So that was clear for the Memorial Day Parade. I, I think that should be it.
It would just be easier than contacting. It, it'd make it simpler. Whatever we have to do for that.
Have people been irresponsible about getting their tents and all that down?
The tents do not come on the holiday.
But they will.
The base, yeah, you have to pay extra.
And I would have one more question, Joe. What if we had an open enrollment window, like, uh, two months, you have to give in within two months and there's some more open enrollment that would prioritize? Is that too confusing for the public? So that you don't get it ten months ahead of time?
Well, I personally think that what we should do is to clarify this and I know, I never talked to Drake about this, but I think the other thing that we could probably do to clarify that is if you are gonna have a parade, it is gonna be designated at a certain route. Um, because for instance, you know, this Oktoberfest is huge. And I understand that and I'm behind that a hundred percent. It's just that, uh, you have.
Homecoming doesn't always fall on Oktoberfest. It just didn't this year.
And why did that, I mean, somebody needs to contact us before they decide that stuff.
Oh, I don't know that they, I don't know that they get, I don't know if they decide.
We can come up first.
The whole team did a survey that. It's based off of the home year. So they decided to make it, they could have done the slide thing or they could have done it on that.
So there's school, there's.
Tammy?
Okay.
There's a lot of control here.
Uh, we will come up with a proposal and bring it forward to the board.
Can I, can I make one more quick? Uh, when you're talking about prioritizing things, um, I would love to get all of our permits in January first. I would make me so happy, but it's a bad joke. Um, but the challenge is, is that for some things like Oktoberfest, we don't have a finalized schedule until like three months out and we can't get it a lot earlier. We can't confirm that tug of war is coming for sure because of all these other dominoes. So I wouldn't, I hesitate to make it wholly based on who got in first because it's not always being irresponsible. It's that you can't fully plan six months ahead of time.
And in all honesty, we've had that issue as well. When somebody comes in, like the year, they have an event, they come in the next week or next year. Well, it's not complete because, yeah.
I know what one guy's talking about.
So, yeah, just leaving it. So first come, first served might create a different set of issues.
And my other quick question, like you asked, for these street permits, does that include too when somebody does a street permit for a dumpster, then they're gonna have to do it two months ahead of time?
It would be a closing of the traffic lanes, not the parking lane.
Okay.
Are we done discussing? Uh, okay. Item eleven, is there more to full session? Is there a?
I'll make a motion to go into full session.
Second.
Um, Michael?
I'm sorry.
Full session.
Full session, yeah, yes.
Mike Gancher?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yeah.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Yes.
Peter Strick?
Yes.
Roger Turtman?
Yes.
We're closed.